January 23rd, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Mayor Protempiana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. And we have a quorum this evening. Next item of business will be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I think there's actually going to be a couple of modifications, right?
The public hearing B, 6B, should be coming off. We're going to be considering that at the next meeting. So the Ferndale Apartments, 409 on 9.
We're going to move that to the next meeting?
Yeah, that'll be on the February 13 meeting.
And I would suggest that we add a second short presentation from our state representative. So we'll make it, not yet. We're just adding you to the agenda.
Very short.
And as presentation B, so.
Therefore, I amend my motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
Any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now, two presentations, and our first presentation is from the Ferndale Arts and Culture. At least one person clapped for that.
Yes. So Dave asked me before this if I could make this run an hour and a half, so I've queued up Moby Dick on my phone to take up the remainder of my presentation. I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what we've been working on lately. We have an event on February 2nd, next Thursday, with Amy Heimerle at the Ferndale Library. She is the author of Detroit Hustle, a memoir about purchasing and renovating a historic home in Detroit. That'll be at 6:30 at the library. On February 19th, we're continuing our Salon Sunday series at Dino's with Shannon Percy and Chris Barty. And then we've developed a few new initiatives this year that we're really excited about. The first is a mini-film festival that we're aiming to do on April 29th. We have about four and a half hours of film lined up between shorts, music videos, commercials, and feature lengths, and we're just kind of polishing off the final locations for that. In mid-May, we're hoping to have a public piano installed downtown in conjunction with Cindy Wilcock and the DDA. Kind of the basic idea is just getting a piano that nobody wants anymore and keeping it downtown and keeping it tuned, and the public can play it as they see fit and maybe decorate it a little bit. That's being sponsored by Manu Heshmadi of Piecemeal Kitchen. And then finally, our own Jeannie Davis has been championing this initiative. Along with the Beautification Commission and the Garden Club, we are doing a garden walk on June 11th. That'll include artists and musicians at each location, right? And I believe...
The gardens will be where the beautification will...
Yes. So, and then we have a few other things in the work that are still pretty nascent at this point and worth discussing at this point, but I'll be back probably in a few months to talk about those.
Good, good, good agenda stuff. Sounds interesting. Yeah, thank you. Wonderful. And now, our state representative is here, Representative Wittenberg. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well. Yes, very short presentation. You know, it's rare...
You've only been in session for two weeks.
That's right. And that's what I came to say, is that I haven't even, we don't even know what committees were going to be assigned yet. We're hoping to find that out this week. We were just sworn in on January 11th, and then State of the State was last week. And then unfortunately, I came down with a horrible sinus infection, so in case you hear a little bit of congestion, that's what you're hearing here. But yeah, literally just came to say hello, just because my evenings are open right now. You know, things, it gets really busy as the year progresses, but obviously always want to check in and see what's going on in Ferndale, and then as always, let people know that I'm here to help if they ever need anything. And then I'll keep you posted. Once I get my committee assignments and keep you posted as things progress in Lansing, and obviously if there's ever anything that's of concern to you, please reach out to me. And same thing for everyone at home. Since I know it by heart now, I can, I'll give out my phone number and email address if anyone ever needs anything to call the office, 517-373-0478. And if you want to email me, it's robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. And like I said, I was just coming briefly to say hello and noticing, I think, this is new paint. Looks nice. Fresh coat of paint, is that, I mean, it's...
New paint, new, new...
Yeah.
Lights, new steps, and soon to be new carpeting. Yeah, we're...
Moving up in the world.
Freshening up.
Yeah.
That's a change.
It looks, it looks great. It looks great. So that's, that's really it. You know, just again, you know, I'm excited to start a new session. And, you know, last session, I don't know if I mentioned here, but I ended up having the most bills passed by a freshman Democrat. I had more bills than any other Democrats, you know, passed into, into law, so I was proud to say that. And thank you.
One, and I'm trying to think if there was two, I think two, I had four bills signed
into law. Two of them were ideas that came from constituents. So constituents came to either coffee hours or reached out to me directly and had ideas of legislation. And those were the bills, you know, those were some of the ones that got signed into law. So again, if anyone has any concerns, they have any suggestions with the way things are going in Lansing, please reach out. You know, we can, we can hopefully get some things accomplished and make changes if necessary. And again, if there's ever any questions, concerns, comments, please reach out to me. And if, again, if I don't have the answer, I will, I will point you in the right direction. But just wanted to say hello and I guess wish you all a Happy New Year as well. I guess slightly belated, but that's it. Any questions, anything?
Do you have any questions?
I do have one question.
Sure.
So you said, so there will be new committee assignments, or is there anything in particular you'd like to stay on?
So I, you know, I served previously on the Insurance Committee on Health Policy, and I was the Minority Vice Chair for Financial Liability Reform, which was, you know, municipal finance, public debt. And I, I actually did request the same committees, just because of my background with being insurance sales and health insurance specifically, so that I understand on the health policy side of things. And then with Financial Liability Reform, having, you know, served as the Minority Vice Chair and having that experience, but obviously there's no guarantee. What happens is we submit to our leader, so our new leader is now Sam Singh, who's the representative from Lansing area, from East Lansing, I should say. And our new floor leader is actually Christine Gregg, who is from Oakland County here. So she's from Farmington, Farmington Hills. So that's the new leadership team for us on the Democratic side. New Speaker of the House is Tom Leonard, who's from just outside of Lansing. But so what happens is I make requests to my leader, to Sam Singh. Sam Singh then makes the request to the Speaker of the House. Ultimately, the Speaker of the House has the final decision as to what committee assignments we get. And so that's what we're waiting on. We thought we might have it at the end of last week, but we were told that it should be here sometime this week. So hopefully we can hit the ground running. But we've already, I've already introduced some, some legislation, a bill for no reason absentee voting, or any reason absentee voting, as well as automatic voter registration. So when you go to the Secretary of State, you're automatically registered to vote. You have to opt out, is how it would be set up. So those are a couple of the bills, and obviously there's quite a few other ones that I'm working on, but without committees, they're not getting referred to committee as of yet. So we have a bunch in the hopper that we're just kind of waiting on. And again, if, you know, if anyone has any ideas, reach out to me. I know there's one constituent who lives here in Ferndale, Phil, and he's, he's great, and he, he reaches out to me. He comes to my coffee hours all the time. He reaches out to me. He runs numbers. He has stats. He's tremendous. And so he actually already reached out to me on a couple ideas to work on. So again, I encourage people to please do exactly that. So thank you for that question. Any other questions?
Not a question, but there's a couple of things I do want to touch base with you about, or I'll call you.
Sounds good. You know how to reach me.
You.
Yeah, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for stopping in. Very good. That's, yeah, all right. We'll pause this, Representative. All right. Our next item of business is a public hearing, and it's on the master plan adoption. And Jordan, are you, or Justin, you're going to enter. Right, Justin's going to introduce this. Been working on this for a while, correct?
A little while, yes. It even predates me, so.
Serious? Wow.
Yes.
Oh, what did I do?
No, no, oh, the public hearings first.
Yeah, public hearings are before, yep.
All right. So I just thought it would be a good, good idea to just bring forth master plan, just a general summary. Hopefully, most people have been able to review at least pieces of it. We've been working on it for almost two years, I want to say, at this point. And so just want to say a quick thank you to all the residents that gave feedback throughout the entire process, all of the city staff, pretty much every staff member in this room contributed in some, some way. And then also, all the steering committees that were put together. A lot of different people contributed in a lot of different ways. Hamilton Anderson Associates was the primary, did all the heavy lifting on this plan, and they weren't able to make it tonight, but definitely want to thank them for all that they contributed in this plan. So just a quick summary, some of you have already seen this, but essentially, you know, what is a master plan? Some people may not know what a master plan is. Hopefully, this is not the first time they're hearing about it, but if so, it is posted on the city's website on the Community Plans page. So what is different about the master plan this time? I'll go through some highlights and then just general next steps. So in general, master plans are required by the state of Michigan. Many plans talk about existing conditions and then also just recommendations for policy in action. But the main idea is that it's a vision and an action plan, so setting that common vision with goals and actions for the next five to 10 years and beyond. Our plan in particular does align with existing plans, so the strategic plan that we're going through that process right now. I think some of you probably heard me say that the consultant for the strategic plan had said that, you know, with many master plans, sometimes they're very aspirational, and she sometimes brushes those off, but our plan, she actually reviewed, and it's guiding much of the conversation that we had, which is great. Parks and Recreation Plan, that draft is also being reviewed, is, you know, directly linked to this plan, so that's being, that's on the city's website right now for people to review. And then also Ferndale Moves, the multimodal plan, so a lot of alignment there. One important distinction about a master plan is that it is not zoning. It does guide decisions on future development and does make recommendations on changes to the zoning ordinance, but it is primarily just a guide for that process. So this, essentially, this time, it's all about implementation. Of course, we did all the, the basic vision and background, existing conditions, and that was very much a part of the 2008 process, but we really wanted to focus on implementation. So as you'll see, if you've seen the plan, 118 action items, a lot of those will be falling on Community and Economic Development Department to coordinate, and I'll have some, I'll discuss that in the next step section. As I mentioned, vision, the vision's been updated, you know, preserve and enhance and diversify. I think those were great starts in 2008. You know, but things have changed in Ferndale, and, you know, I think we expect more of, of this plan, so progressive, equitable, sustainable, resilient, those are all items that the Planning Commission and even members of council had included, and that also helped guide some of the vision for the strategic plan.
Even council.
Even council, that's right. So also, we did some market studies specifically on downtown Ferndale and then what we called the industrial district, the triangle district between East Nine Mile and Woodward Heights, just to get a sense of what's there and what could be the demand in the future. So from a residential perspective, you know, we're, we're kind of seeing this play out from the private sector now through some of the plans that have, development plans that have came through with a decent number of units coming through the next five years. Office, there's certainly a strong demand for that as well. And then retail. So all of these things are, all these figures relate to demand in, in what could complement what's already great about Ferndale. Digging into a little bit more of the housing, I think you've seen this, if you've seen the, the master plan, but, you know, this is a real opportunity to provide other types of housing typologies and a range of different housing units for people to consider. There's a strong demand for multiple family, and, but there's also demand for other types of single-family and some of the missing middle housing that we've talked about previously as well. You know, there's obviously been a shift in, just, not just in Michigan, but in the country as well, on people wanting to live closer to walkable downtowns. You're seeing that with an increase in, you know, youngers and, younger singles and couples that are looking to move to Ferndale and Detroit and places like that, but also some empty nesters and retirees that, you know, would like to downsize and potentially move in an area where they can walk and find all of their different amenities. Sustainability was something that we had toyed around with being a sole chapter in the plan, but it really, the more we talked about it, it just seemed like it weaved through every section. So we have all these different titles or chapters within the plan, but sustainability is a piece of each of those. Everything from recommendations on if you're putting in a new driveway and what green stormwater tactics you can use to potentially increasing some of the green requirements we consider for new development. As I mentioned earlier, we had a lot of community input on the plan, which was great. Everything from our own online portal that was specific to the master plan, to, you know, comments on Facebook as well. We had a public open house last February that was at the Rust Belt, and we had a lot of great feedback, and I think people really did enjoy putting those emojis on things that they preferred and didn't prefer in the city, which was great. We had an advisory committee made up of business owners, staff, residents as well, and then a number of different focus groups. So the Sustainability Commission was really important, the Parks Commission. We had a great meeting with the senior group, got a lot of good feedback from them, and then also some downtown stakeholders and industrial stakeholders took their time and gave feedback on the plan, which we appreciated. As I said earlier, implementation is a huge portion of this plan, so we've kind of divided things into now, things we're already working on, near, things that we should start working on in the next one to two years, and then next, for the next three to five years, you'll kind of see that. But again, 118 action items that we're going to be trying to accomplish over the coming years. As with every master plan, we do look at the future land use to guide development, you know, just to guide that, those planning decisions and zoning over, over the years. So these classifications were updated, and they cover a range of different zoning districts, but it, when we updated that, we considered everything from all the regional planning efforts along Woodward and Eight Mile that are happening, to market conditions, and just ways to preserve open space and incorporate some more sustainable development. So this is just a, this is the general update. We did update a couple of the classification names. We did specifically call out open space on the plan, or on the future land use map, but I think it's a good guide for, for where Ferndale's going right now. I won't go through all of these, but I just kind of broke down from the action item list in each chapter, some of the things we're going to be working on. So right now, we're currently working on updating our lighting ordinance, and one of the key recommendations from the plan was a dark sky lighting ordinance. So that's something that's already in process. We're also looking at expanding the different zoning districts where senior living housing is permitted. Right now, it's only permitted in essentially one district, and it doesn't include the downtown district. So those seniors that are empty nesters that want to live and walk downtown don't really have that option yet, so that's one of the key items we're looking at moving forward. Regarding housing, you know, I think a lot of people know that Ferndale's a great place to live, but finding a better way to communicate that, that's one of the action items. And then finding other ways that neighbor, we have a couple, you know, really great neighborhood groups in the city, so giving them more tools and giving other neighborhoods tools in which they can participate and start their own groups is something that's pretty important to this plan. Mixed use was a big portion of the 2008 plan, and we think that's been help, you know, key in our economic vitality over the years. So creating a specific strategy to attract retail is something we're looking at, and it's been a clear goal from this council as well. Regarding recreation, open space, you'll see the Parks Plan in the next month or so with update, an update for that. But renovating Martin Road Park was a specific sub-plan of that plan, so you'll, you'll get to see, you know, the long-term plans for that. Also, just creating a, a better way to, or a potential way in the future to explore some more downtown has been something I think everybody's wanted, and that's, that's sort of a longer-term vision that's part of the plan as well. The multimodal plan for no moves, as I said earlier, is connected in this chapter. So just, you know, despite the RTA millage not passing in November, you know, making sure that we're still part of those regional transit conversations and how we can still, you know, plan for the future. Even something simple is providing more bike parking to get, make biking more top of mind for folks. And then lastly, just focusing on, you know, our own city services and facilities, so, you know, considering ways that we can add recycling in all of our public trash areas, and then, you know, potentially creating a drop-off program for some of those items that are a little tougher to recycle at DPW. So those are just brief action items from the plan, but essentially, we're already working on some of those now items, so the lighting ordinance I mentioned, signed ordinance is one that we've talked about quite a bit. Planning a Ferndale Bike Month that aligns with National Bike Month of May is something where we've kicked off internally last week with some internal stakeholders, so that should be something we'll talk to you more about in the future. Updating a couple zoning district standards to make sure that they align with the new typology that we've been talking about. And then creating actual design guidelines with the DDA and then potentially with growing corridors like Wood, excuse me, Hilton and Laverne. So how will this all be tracked and managed? We'd essentially like to create an interdepartmental group, and the Planning Commission kind of chimed in on this, and I think we have a member there, so if there's a member of council that would like to participate, we can talk about that. But really getting a, you know, a stakeholder from all the internal groups to work on now, all those now items and make sure we're ready for the next items and keep on track is something that we'd like to do. And then providing monthly reports to the Planning Commission, to you, and then finding a place on the city's website that we can share all these items and make sure that we're keeping track of everything in a dashboard-type format is something we're working on as well. So I'm here for any questions, and I didn't receive any questions through email or, or by phone from the public hearing notice, but.
This is obviously something we've discussed quite a bit in the last...
Correct.
For how long? But are there any questions or comments of council on the master plan? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. We have a public hearing. This isn't a discussion item. This is a public hearing. Thank you, Dan. So at this point, I would open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the master plan adoption? Right. Seeing none. That doesn't often happen in communities, by the way. These can be, these can be contentious, but I think that speaks to the fact that you've had so much public input and engagement that all the issues have been sort of ironed out before you got here.
Yeah, and the 2008 plan really was a great plan that got us, I think, on track so we could have such a, you know, implementation-focused plan, so that certainly helped.
So now, if there are any comments or questions of council?
Through the chair is the, is the current Planning Commission representative, and having watched this process all the way through, I just want to commend you for the work and the work that our consultant did. This was a major, major process and undertaking, and as part of this, I looked at a lot of other cities' master plans too, just from a comparison, and this is probably the most comprehensive and, I think, true to our own goals and culture of the city that you've been able to achieve here. So congratulations. I didn't volunteer at the Planning Commission, because I want to go into the other commissioners' too, but I would be happy to volunteer to fill that role in your work group to...
Great.
To track it going forward if no one else is interested. But again, I just want to send my congratulations. We looked at this 16 times, so I don't have any comments to that, other than to say thank you, thank you for getting us across the finish line.
Thanks.
Through the chair, I just want to echo that. I started on the Planning Commission with this process, and I know, Justin, that you carried a load after Derek departed and went on to other things, and so just wanted to say thank you for keeping it going and getting us to the end of this line. And echoing what Councilman Martin said, I think this plan is a really reflection of us, of the community, of our, our values and interests. And I really feel like it's a citizen-supported plan, which is ultimately what you want. And I feel like we've, like, nailed, you know, really knocked it out of the ballpark. Is that what you, hit it all the ballpark?
That's the correct phrase.
For a non-baseball person. So I just, I feel really comfortable over the next five years that this is going to guide, be a really great guide to take us forward. Most important, though, I think it's amazing that we've been able to incorporate sustainability across all aspects of this plan, which I think is something that most cities haven't done. Usually, they have two separate plans. They have sort of a sustainability plan, and we've integrated, you know, trying something new, and I think it's going to work for us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank the boards and commissions, but especially the staff who spent many, many hours, late nights, long weekends. This is the most comprehensive master land use plan that I've ever had the pleasure to read, let alone be a part of. For me, the beauty of this plan is how our annual goals, strategic plan, and vision have been woven into the document. With this master land use plan, we've created a roadmap to success for the next five to 10 years.
Thank you.
Yes, one last comment, and I guess I'll be echoing Gregg. Pollocka, that I really appreciate how thorough it is. I know how much work went into this. I heard so much about it, and then I came in on it at the beginning of the year, so I just really appreciate the work from all the boards and commissions, and I appreciate the work from the community, because as Mayor Protempiana stated, this is our master plan, so I'm really excited to see what's to come, so thank you.
And I guess I would just add that, kind of off of what Councilman Pollocka said, it's easy to spend a lot of time on these kind of things and then put them on the shelf, and then they get dusty, but that my favorite part about this plan is that it's so heavily focused on implementation. It really is sort of a step-by-step guide that will guide our, our city, even if we individually are gone, you know, for, I feel very confident that for the next five years, if any of us individually are gone and people come in our place, they have the roadmap, they can measure the success. And, and it's a, a plan that's very much reflective of our community, so congratulations to you and all the team that helped put this together.
Thanks.
I think Councilwoman Piana wants to the last word.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, now the hard work begins.
True.
So...
Downer.
Yeah. On that note, do you want to call a roll call?
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry, oh.
Need a motion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to support this baby. All right. I move, I move that City Council adopt the attached resolution adopting the master plan update.
Support.
Because it really is like a baby.
It was moved by Piana and supported by Martin.
Turned into a toddler.
All right, now there, there is an opportunity for final comments or questions.
Two years of work and we screw up the motion.
Screw it.
All right. So Marnie, you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes.
All right, on that note...
Oh.
Yay! Good job, Justin.
Worth the wait.
Yep.
Save these for when we build a parking lot. All right.
We'll put them in storage.
All right, the next item of business is call the audience. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can talk to that when we get to that part on the agenda?
Are you guys going to applaud me like that?
Yes. I will.
Jeannie Davis, and tonight I'm wearing my senior citizen hat. The senior group this Wednesday, which is the 25th of January at the Kulik Center at 11:00 AM, is hosting Gary Taylor from the Historic Museum, and he'll be giving a talk on some of the more interesting historic aspects of Ferndale. His talks are always well-researched and, and well-written, and there's always a Q&amp;A afterwards. It is free, and you don't have to be a senior or a member to attend, so. And in February, we'll be having Bear and Brown come to talk about the place we're using, so, thank you. And he'll be giving a talk on some of the more interesting historic aspects of Ferndale. His talks are always well researched and well-written and there's always a Q and A afterwards. It is free and you don't have to be a senior or a member to attend. And in February, we'll be having Bear and Brown come to talk about the police liaison. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Expect that every time, don't you? Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, our items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless someone on council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held January 9, 2017. Item B is the approval of the reappointments to city boards and commissions as submitted by the city clerk and noted in your packet. Item C is the approval to accept the Oakway MyMABUS invoice for $5,000 to be paid from the fire department's membership and dues account. Item D is the approval to accept the Lexa Poll invoice for $5,738 for 2017 services to be paid from the fire department contractual services account noted on the. Item E is the approval of proposed easement agreement regarding 1221 Wordsworth and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. And finally, item F is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the. Worthy's counsel's pleasure on the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Now, any discussion?
I did have a question regarding consent agenda item C. Seeing that that really looks like an acronym of like, what does that, what does that mean?
Great question. Fire chief, do you want to tell us what Oakway My?
MABUS.
Yeah, through the chair, MyMABUS is Michigan MABUS. MABUS means mutual aid box alarm system. System that developed in Illinois, spread through Indiana, Ohio, and we adopted in Michigan a few years ago. It allowed to mutual aid resources all across all counties and that. And then there's a MEMAC agreement, so we can leave the state of Michigan and go to Illinois, Indiana, or where other states may need without having to wait for the governor and local consent, so that when people need help, you can move a strike force of engines or a rescue strike force to wherever they need the help quickly.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the consent agenda? By council or anyone here? All right, and we have a motion and support, so I guess, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda now, item A is the consideration of appointment of Jennifer Hubel to the planning commission for a term ending December 31st, 2019. And I know she's not here with us, but Councilman Martin, if you.
Sure, with the resignation of Sarah Rodiger, last council meeting, there creates an opening on the planning commission. We have a nominee I'd like to support, Jennifer Hubel. She has her undergraduate degree from Western Michigan, graduate degree from Lawrence Tech, has experience primarily in architecture, but also in marketing in the construction field. Her skill set, both staff and myself feel that her skill set would be a very strong addition to the planning commission. So I'd like to request that we approve this appointment.
Well, you can make that motion.
Oh yeah, I could, why don't I? I would like to move to confirm the appointment of Jennifer Hubel to the planning commission for a term ending December 31st, 2019.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Now, any discussion?
I looked at her credentials and she sounds like a good fit for the planning commission.
Yeah, and I like that she's not a brand new, but a relatively new resident of Ferndale, so fresh set of eyes.
Other comments or questions? Dan Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Now moving on to regular agenda, item B is the consideration of incentives policy developed by the city's incentives committee. And Jordan, is that, you're going to introduce that item?
Yeah. I don't know, you may or may not want to use those. That's totally up to you. But I'm really excited to present this item. It's one of the first projects I got tasked with, with joining the team in August. It's been in the works for quite some time with the incentives committee, which is that sort of interdepartmental task force similar to what we'd like to create for the master plan. And it had representation from council, the BRA, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for folks who aren't familiar with the jargon, but also planning commission and several other departments. So what you have before you is the policy that is the result of all that work. It's a balance between a specific framework, but enough discretion to allow each project to be considered on its own merits. What is it doing for the city? What elements of the master plan and strategic priorities does it meet? And having the incentives committee sort of as that gatekeeper. So any project that comes to us for incentives will have to go through a vetting process. And then if they want a specific type of incentive, they still have to go through that process as well. So it's sort of a team effort to kind of make sure that there's consistency in the way that we give out these incentives to ensure that they're meeting the values that we're looking for. And what I wanted to go over, I didn't want to sort of belabor the review. I know you've seen the document before, but Dan Christ, our city attorney, was a big help in terms of providing a review and looking at some of the language here, making sure that we were clear, we were consistent. And so I made a couple material changes that I just wanted to bring to your attention. And so if you were to flip to page four, if you notice the last item there talks about the fee having, it talks about an issue with brownfield tax capture, the TIF plans. It refers to a 5% administrative fee. So there's a legal statute that allows us to set certain fees and gives parameters for that. And so you'll notice the language that I put in there allows it to say the lesser of 5% or the actual cost of administration of the given project. So we want to make sure that we're compliant with statute, so that language was inserted. And then if you flip to page five, you'll notice that second bullet, tax capture for the city revolving loan fund, you'll basically notice that included each year at 3% of the annual tax capture and for five years following reimbursement has been deleted and it simply reads will be to the maximum amount permitted. So essentially, we wanted to eliminate an inconsistency with another section in the policy. So that sounds sort of really in the weeds, but I just wanted to make sure, since it's different from the plan that you see in front of you, that those material changes are in there. But otherwise, this bad boy is quite vetted and ready to go. And it gives us a great framework and a lot of the projects that have come since I joined the team in the summer, we've used this already as a great framework to start discussions and get folks to meet certain goals that are in here, making sure they're tied to the master plan, making sure that we're ensuring that our incentive system's sustainable, that we're capturing funds for the revolving fund and holding developers accountable to that. And so so far, we've seen a lot of really great success and we're really excited in our department, once this thing is sort of the law of the land, to be able to use it effectively. With that, I'll take any questions you have about the policy.
Through the chair, on the fees, for the application plans submitted and review material change fees, are those higher, lower, consistent with neighboring cities? What's that equitable to?
They're relatively consistent with neighboring cities, although I would say we probably have a more comprehensive policy in terms of incentives. But the general idea there is to discourage some of the stuff that we saw with incentive applications where we get very general numbers on an initial application or a very general plan. And then there'd be some very substantial changes to that plan and we require basically a relitigation of the entire issue, fresh start review. So we're trying to eliminate that and let folks know that, give us your best upfront so that we can work with you and move you through the process faster.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question, but it's mostly a comment, just so you can talk about it. One of the questions that we're going to be posing to potential applicants is how they match with the sustainability efforts as noted in our master plan and rather than putting the qualifications in the policy itself, because those change over time, is that it's going to be in the application and we'll be asking questions through the application that staff will vet and make sure there's alignment as part of the overall policy. So if you can talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely, that's a great comment. Because one of the issues when we were putting this together is we wanted to have a framework that brought in all those elements that we care about, but we didn't want to, one, have something too constrictive and, two, neglect something and create confusion that if it was listed here, it mattered and if it wasn't listed, it didn't matter. So for example, things like historic preservation, energy efficiency, sustainability, all of those things, because they are part of our master plan and that master plan is referenced in this policy, are basically under that umbrella. So essentially, by referencing the plan, it includes all those elements to make sure that they're part of an application's consideration.
How do the, in the section on time limitations, how do those compare with previous sort of guidelines, I guess?
Well, frankly, they're a little bit shorter, for the most part. You know, when I came on board, we had about 12 active brownfields. And one of the issues with that specifically was, and this is sort of getting in the weeds, but essentially, a brownfield is allowed by state statute to capture revenue for up to a maximum of 30 years. So what we had, we had a lot of TIFs that were going 26, 27, 28 years. And so one of the main issues with that is we have the revolving loan fund, which allows in addition to the tax increment finance, we can provide an upfront loan to a development to help. That money getting tapped out is a big concern because you can only support so many projects at once. What the brownfield statute allows you to do is up to five years after a project has been completely reimbursed, you can capture additional revenues to replenish that revolving loan fund. So when TIFs were going to 26, 27, 28 years, you were basically eliminating that ability to capture for the revolving loan fund. So essentially, this is going to truncate a lot of our plans going forward, sort of inspiring those TIFs to stay under 20 years.
If I may then, through the chair, that leaves me to another question. So they've got 180 days from the date of the council vote to execute a reimbursement agreement. Does the reimbursement agreement have to be in place before you do an upfront loan?
It does not have to be, but it should be, exactly.
Do we want that to be part of this?
I'm sorry?
Is this then vague on that issue? Should we say specifically that the reimbursement agreement has to be in place before an upfront loan is provided?
That's up to your discretion, really. I think either way would be good. I think ultimately, what we wanted to drive home is that we did not want those things to stretch out. We wanted to make sure it was wrapped up. So you could decide to include that. It wouldn't hurt the policy or, it could go either way, frankly.
I guess I'm okay not changing it as long as it's a condition on the proposal you bring us, so that we vote.
Yeah, and frankly, just to add to that, Councilman, the reimbursement agreement is typically the sort of nuanced instrument of every incentive package, where you might have the application and they might get approved on the application, the reimbursement will be sort of custom fit to each project. So it's a necessary instrument, there's no getting by it if you're going to have tax increment finance, for example.
A motion would be in order, by the way, we probably weighed it into.
I move that city council approve the incentives policy developed by the city's incentives committee and put its visions into immediate effect.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Leaks May. All right, now, additional comments, questions?
Just nice work. I'm not going to blow a horn for you.
Totally fine.
It's two years.
I was going to say, it takes two years, right?
That's right, that's right. We were too efficient.
Just as a follow-up comment, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Commission members really support this as well and it's really going to help the decision-making on that body as they review and approve and recommend to city council any plans going forward. So I think just overall increases the confidence of the types of applications that are coming to city council.
Thanks. All right, any final comments or questions? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted.
Thank you very much.
And to your team. We give him a glow, Melanie? All right.
Fun times.
So the next item of business would be call to council. We'll start with the fire chief this time.
Shaking it up.
Shaking it up in the new year. Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, Fire Marshal Batten teamed up with the American Red Cross to start a new addition to our smoke detector program. The difference in the program is they don't offer just a smoke detector installed in the home, they're offering as many as needed under National Fire Protection Association recommendations. One on every floor, one in every room, every hallway and stairwell is what's recommended now in order to get ahead of the speed of fires from the plastics and that. So we now have these in stock and are ready to install them on anybody who is disabled, seniors, and anybody who is having financial difficulties and does not have working smoke detectors. So the difference being, we stall a lot more than we ever previously did with a partnership in the Red Cross.
Excellent, good. Hope people take advantage of it. And do they just call the fire department if they want to take advantage of that, chief?
Yes, and they can call 248-632-2096, and that's the fire marshal directly. And he'll make sure they get installed and they'll bring public safety information on other programs and that, just for the persons when they visit. They'll also do a home inspection if asked by the family to make sure there's no other fire hazards there.
Great, thank you. Great, great service, thank you. Captain Palazzolo, anything from the police department this evening? No, all right. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a couple quick announcements of some vacancies that we're currently recruiting for. As you learned last meeting, our current recreation director has decided to resign. And so we actually have an active application process out for that. If you're interested in becoming our next Parks and Rec Director, visit our website at www.ferndalemi.gov. We also are currently recruiting a little bit ahead of schedule this year for our summer recreation programs and camp counselors. So feel free to visit our website or call our human resources department and we'll be happy to get you any information. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So speaking of recreation, Jill, anything from the recreation department this evening? All right. Joe, anything from the assistant city manager office? Nothing this evening. All right, Lloyd, anything from DPW?
Recently, on nine mile, at both Allen and Pinecrest, new signals were installed and have been activated. However, the city's first audible crosswalk is also installed and incorrectly it was activated early. And so we've been getting, and you may have also getting some comments about the audible crosswalk repeatedly asking, enter ID. Soon as we can get the contractor back out at no charge to the city to rewire that is tomorrow. We expect to be tomorrow sometime. And the other thing is, is that they do have to be programmed in the field. County is aware of it. We haven't received the time, but I certainly will let you know when the first audible crosswalk is operational. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Kara, anything from community engagement this evening? All right, Marnie, anything for the city clerk's office?
No, nothing, thank you.
Well, we're still early in the year, right? Back up to speed. April, anything from the city manager's office?
No, not tonight. I know, crazy.
Very briefly, your honor, prior to council meeting this evening, the ordinance committee met and there will be a couple of ordinances coming to council for review in the near future, both, one with respect to a modification or refinement of the special event ordinance and then also a tweaking of the ordinance regarding placement of structures, including dumpsters and construction debris in the public right of way without a permit. So that should be coming to council at its first meeting in February.
Great, thank you. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, just one thing. I want to publicly thank Mayor Protem Piana, Councilwoman Leaks May, and what looked like to be hundreds of people who participated in the protests this weekend in DC and Lansing and Detroit and Arbor. Not all of us could participate in ways we would have liked, but it was really heartening to see a strong Ferndale presence in that activity, being fully supportive and representative. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank you all.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Okay, a couple things here. So Dan already mentioned the women's march, so I'm going to leave that one alone, but thank you, that's okay. This weekend, this Saturday, is the Ferndale Public Schools All-City Concert. And what it is, is a way to showcase all of the talents that our students have. The orchestras will be presenting, the choirs will be presenting, and the band will be presenting. And it's from 11 to 5 at Ferndale Schools. There is a raffle, if you're interested, and get in touch with me. And if you can get a raffle ticket, some great cash prizes. But it's a really, it's a wonderful event, so I hope you can at least pop in through that time, within that timeframe. You don't have to stay from 11 to 5. It's just different groups perform at different times, so. And I happen to have two viola players and a choir singer who will be in it, so. And also, again, I'm giving a shout out to a business that I frequented and they had great service. And I don't know if you all know about it, but it's called Barber 940. Barber 940 is located on nine mile, just across the street from Dairy Queen. And a great business, diverse clientele, and great barber, so giving them a shout out and give them some business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Michigan Municipal League is having a news conference tomorrow related to the Save My City work that they've been doing to have conversations around the municipal finance reform for the state, but it's in response to Governor Rick Snyder's recent State of the State address, and it's going to be livestreamed and at 1 o'clock tomorrow. So, you can view it at savemycity.org.
Excellent.